Alright, uh, good evening. Um, to the call to order of the Sunapee School District meeting Wednesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-two at exactly six P M. In the S M H S Gymnasium next to a soccer game, which is awesome. Roll call from the far corner. Miss Gear, please. We have a student rep, uh, playing just outside this wall. So I, I, student voice is important, so I asked, um, Cam to send a representative and David, thankfully, stepping in as a student voice. He'll read his update shortly.
Shaun, you're the principal of Sunapee Middle High School?
Egan Reed, assistant principal of Sunapee Middle High School.
I'm Anderson School Board.
Karen McCall, class school board.
Amy Nichols, school board.
Scott Ritzman, school board.
Jesse Tyler, school board.
Russ Holden, superintendent.
Ellie Russell, business administration.
Is that alright on sound? Is that, is that, uh, sound? Sounds good. Okay. As long as you're good. Uh, thank you. Okay, off the races. So contacts for a meeting. Um, I call this after here's the school board. This is a feel-good meeting where the priority is hearing that school is open again. I'm here for staff and students. Um, there's some light, light lifting on business that will move through more briskly than usual so that people get their beautiful evening and the opportunity without even getting in a car to go watch some quality soccer. So, where if there's times I move, move things on quickly, I did not have to have a cappuccino. It's in our shared interest. Um, so looking for a motion to approve the school board meeting minutes from August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, please.
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the meetings from the last minute, August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two.
Second by character discussion. Any commentary, corrections? Pontifications? Okay. All in favor of approving the school board meeting minutes as noted for August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, please say aye. Aye, hand signal for the home, folks watching at home. Uh, gender review. I have nothing to add, Mr. Holden. Nothing. No one's making eye contact. We're gonna keep moving. Public forum in accordance to policy, B E P H. You have four minutes. Please introduce yourself at the microphone. At three and a half minutes, I'll go like this respectfully. And you can line the plane, please.
Um, I'm in the Hilo, five forty-seven North Road. So I'm, I have two hats. The first one I just wanna do as a taxpayer and a resident. I had the opportunity to be in the building when Carrie and Andy went through the walkthrough. And I just wanna say I am so impressed with the level of detail. You guys went through each room and the building contractor and the project manager. I think sometimes people don't see those little pieces because I didn't until seeing you guys walk through how much time you have devoted just in my one classroom. So I can't even imagine as a whole. So I just wanna thank you that you took our taxpayer dollars and you really are, are doing a huge job. So thank you so much. It was really cool to see firsthand just how invested you guys are and the time and effort you're putting into it. So thank you. Secondly, in my teacher's hat, I have just a thank you card from elementary school teachers for the hard work you guys did to get this building project passed. The building looks fantastic even in construction right now. And we're just so thankful for all of the changes and everything that you guys helped pass along.
Uh, other speakers? Seeing none. Um, school updates. We're gonna start with the refreshed, almost-done school with our new principal who faces giving him away the tone of what his update is likely to be. Patrick, Gordon, the floor is yours.
Alright, well, I wanna echo what Amanda said. Thank you very much for your dedicated work, particularly Andy and Carrie. Uh, it was no easy task what we did, um, and it's impressive. Uh, about a week ago, I said to myself, are we really doing this? And, uh, even yesterday, I heard teachers saying that and repeating that. We did it. Uh, we opened the building today, welcomed all of our students back to the elementary school, and it felt really great. It looks great. It feels great. Yes, there's things that are still going on. Um, as a whole, everyone is unbelievably so thrilled to be back in the building and having a fairly typical year already at the start, regardless of the delayed start. Um, that couldn't have been done without a lot of different people. Our custodians who were working around the clock the last three weeks. Um, they were moving in and out stuff, and we're still tracks, trying to track down stuff that got moved quickly, but we're finding it all. Uh, our paraprofessionals were rock stars. They were coming and going and flexing in different places, just supporting and making sure that everything was done and prepared for our students today. Our teachers, uh, they started coming in, uh, Saturday and Sunday they could go in, and they started preparing. Uh, there were a number of them there both days, uh, getting their classrooms to the level that they expected themselves, and, uh, they got it there. I hope they feel that. I hope they feel that way. Um, but, uh, our administration team, just unbelievable, just what we, what we, uh, were able to accomplish together. Um, and also the fact that they were able to kinda keep me up in the, about in this wonderful experience. Uh, but the big, the big person I really wanted to, like, make sure that, uh, got some, uh, kudos for, his hard work is Matt. Our, our facilities team is wonderful. He, he leads a, uh, just an A-plus group of committed folks who, uh, you know, we told them on Tuesday afternoon, hey, you can go home early because we might need you Saturday, and they just said yes. Uh, we, but Matt as a whole, I ask him a question, he's got an answer pretty quickly. Uh, even right now, questions that don't immediately need answers, he's still somehow getting them to me amongst all the mess and chaos that we're still sorting through. Uh, he's been sort of a calm, cool, collected kind of person, and, uh, we couldn't have done this without him. Um, you'd ask me, Jesse, to kinda introduce myself to the community and the board. Do you want me to do that still?
Yeah, please.
Alright. So just a little bit about me. Uh, this is my first principalship. I'm originally from New York. Uh, I studied to be a music teacher. Uh, last month, it was reported that I was a music teacher. I was never. Uh, I served as a classroom special educator in Northeast Kingdom of Vermont, in the Upper Valley of Vermont. Uh, I got a chance to be a leader in a number of strategic planning initiatives, a number of continuous improvement initiatives, and I really enjoyed the work, working with the community, all the teachers, and trying to figure out what we wanted school systems to look like in the future. And so I pursued a degree in educational leadership, which ultimately left me during COVID, thankfully, on the sidelines because I'm happy I did not have to get administered that. Um, it has been a wonderful transition for me. Uh, just again, uh, Kelly, Ross, Tara, Matt, John, they've been unbelievably supportive, helping me learn to navigate the new, new hat that I wear. Um, in terms of summer, just to get used to new place, new space, new faces, I invited every teacher in to have a one-to-one meeting with me. Uh, I had almost all of them come in, and they were excited to come in and get a chance to just sit down, talk with me. And some of them we talked school, some of them we didn't. Uh, and it speaks to each of our teachers' individual personalities more than anything. Uh, they were wonderful. Everyone had, uh, great feedback to say that they really enjoyed our time. Uh, even some have asked if we do a mid-year check-in like that, just sit down one-on-one. No agenda, just talk and see where it goes. Um, we've collaborated on a number of things to really improve things. Our student support center, we felt like we needed some mission envisioning around it, just to understand what it's for, and that's a big piece of who I am as a leader. I wanna understand why we do things so that we can make it better for our students. So you'll notice that, uh, as we move through the year, as I don't know things, I wanna know more of the why. Why are we doing this? And then really digging deep at our goals about it. So we did that, and, uh, as of now, I can tell you, today was utilized our soon sports center, uh, and all of our processes were followed, and we heard great feedback. Um, just off of, uh, personal, uh, she's not here. She usually comes off. Carrie is usually here. Carrie Gross is my administrative assistant. Uh, I couldn't have done this without her. Uh, she is just the backbone of our school, and I know everyone feels that way, but questions I ask them, she's got an answer. What-ifs that I throw out there that are hypothetical, she's gonna let me and she's gonna give me history and all the experiences of everyone before me, and, uh, she's just a very humbling person. She's kept me in check, and she's just been there for me. So, uh, I'm excited to be here, work with each of you, get to know everyone, and see what we can do together.
Awesome. Welcome, welcome aboard, and congratulations on having a building full of students. Slight delay, but dropping running. David, thank you for stepping in for our, uh, soccer-playing student rep. Would you like to share the student update now?
Uh, sure. I have some remarks here prepared by Cameron. School's back in swing again, and most of the students are glad to be back into the groove of things. Student morale is high, there hasn't been much stress, and we're getting back into classes. That said, students have noticed that teachers are much, much more strict with all the rules, and has been made very clear that administration is making it different from last year. It does seem as though some teachers have had to move from their previous teaching methods in order to adapt to some of these stricter policies, but the change is not too dramatic. Aside from that, they're very happy to be back and are excited for the upcoming year. Sports teams are off to a great start, as both the varsity girls and boys soccer teams have won their first few games, and so has volleyball. Already, there's a positive competitive atmosphere that's developed around sports that seems to be keeping the entire school connected. We're very excited to see what's in store for this year.
Thank you. Thanks a lot. You're welcome to hang out, or if you wanna go to the game or other, other things, do as you wish. Uh, for, just for context, for student rep, if you're not familiar, Sunapee's had a long tradition of that. It's something that's been important to me as a board chair for the last five years. Um, and the state of New Hampshire now requires boards to have it. So boards that didn't have a student rep through the state are now gonna have it, and this is just a normal way of working for us, so it's great to hear the student voice. And it's sometimes fun to watch the administrators face as well, the student rep maybe says things about strictness or otherwise. So, Sean, you wanna take it from here, please, for the middle high school?
Yeah, sure. Um, really, uh, really good start to the school year. So, uh, I think, uh, the kids are ready to be back. I always joke, the parent, most of the kids are ready to be back. All the parents are ready for the kids to be back. I always use that, um, that comment in there. Um, you know, one, one change that we had, that I believe I've talked about, is that we, we did discontinue the French program, and so, uh, fortunately, the students and the parents have been great. I, I talked to them in the summer and, uh, you know, come up with alternative plans, and so all the schedules now are all set for the kids, so that was one adjustment. You know, we could do advanced placement computer science class, um, which filled very well for the younger ages. Uh, we had some older kids in it, but it's really intended long-term to be a freshman class for kids to get a taste of the advanced placement curriculum and see if that's something interesting. It was funny, uh, we did have to change open house, so my apologies. We scheduled the open house with the, uh, originally with the, um, community event that we have on school funding, so we've changed that and sent a message out tonight. Uh, as you can imagine, coming up with a date where there are no activities is virtually impossible. Uh, Mr. Frederick was great. I said, please pick the date with the least things going on and then change those. And so Mr. Fred got right on the phone and changed some games around, and, and so September twenty-eighth, I think he had to make three changes, which was the least that we had going on. So that was there. Uh, student rep did speak. Uh, actually makes me happy. One of the things that we worked on with our teachers at the beginning, he was classroom management. And just, um, you know, we're seeing not so much here, but nationally, the teacher, teacher burnout and certain things that, that are concerning to them. And so one of the things we really put an emphasis on, um, you know, we asked them, what were some of the things that had made things difficult the past years or what were challenges? And, you know, one of them, for instance, was students making mean comments but passing them off of, well, I meant in the joking manner. So, you know, things along those lines, we really emphasized, you know, there really can't be any swearing in the classroom. You know, not that we have a, a big swearing culture, but all of a sudden, when, you know, you have a couple of small ones come out and it becomes more accepted. So we're with the teachers of really, you know, there should be no swearing in the classroom at all. It should be referred to the office. We should have no mean comments made where it's not addressed things along those lines. So I think it's been a good, um, start to the school year with that. And I think the teachers, you know, we worked with them on the professional development days, and they felt really good about the, the training that we did on them. So off to, you know, couldn't, couldn't say more about the kids and the teachers this year. Things are, are going very well.
Uh, Mr. Reed, uh, Miss Gear, do you wanna add anything?
Okay. So, uh, learning loss is a big topic. The Wall Street Journal, I think, at the front page, if you still get a paper newspaper, but it's getting lots of traction. So realistically, starting next month, but more so the following month, if you can just key in on your, your experience so far with how our students are doing, they had a very different year, the last couple, couple of years than a lot of other schools with the amount of in-person and everything, but, um, if you don't actually bring that up in the next couple of months, I'll just nudge, and, and it's great for the community to hear that, both, you know, the hard parts and the good parts. Um, do you wanna do your update?
Yes, thank you. So I'll, I'll stick with that theme for just a second. So I think one of the things that we need to realize, as long, you know, we were in school the last two years while a lot of folks were out of school. We did a hundred and seventy-one, um, days the first year of the pandemic. We did the hundred and eighty days last year. And so our, our kids certainly had some learning loss, but I think this is a more important piece, and our kids lost a lot of social opportunity, uh, even though they were here, there were a lot of things that they still couldn't do. You remember back to the first year of the pandemic, it was, can we play sports? Can we not play sports? Can we do field trips? And so we're seeing all school districts and all children are seeing this sort of social, emotional loss that they've, they've had and trying to recover from that, which is certainly having an impact on their cognitive ability. And so I don't wanna pull those two things apart, because those two things are really connected. Uh, over the summertime, we brought in Emily Daniels, and Emily Daniels, uh, has developed a program regarding what's called regulated classroom. She's put that program on throughout the state of New Hampshire, um, and is actually getting some national recognition as well. And we're gonna bring Emily back to, she, so Emily presented to our administrators over the summertime, it was a two-day workshop. I think there were pieces that we all were able to take out of that, as Shaun just said. Um, having teachers being prepared and having, uh, good classroom management is a big piece of helping them deal with the frustrations in their class, but also helping them have strategies to deal with kids who are deregulated or a little off-center and maybe need to get refocused. And the understanding that while it may be good for one student to have those strategies in place, other kids have the ability to help other kids with that regulation as well. And so it's not taking twenty minutes every classroom, but when needed, just different strategies to push in. So Emily is coming back to speak to our entire faculty on January seventeenth, and we've often made arrangements for her to come and speak that night to parents. And so it'll be a nice opportunity for parents to hear some information, and, oh, this is all based on science, it's based upon brain research, and I think it's gonna be really effective and powerful for people to hear. So, next topic for me, obviously, the project. Um, I was just thinking, as I was sitting here, started this in two thousand sixteen, and today to walk into that school and to watch kids walk into that product was awesome. And, you know, Patrick said it, uh, Amanda said it, everyone did a lot of hard work. What I don't wanna have missed is the hard work that the folks who actually did the work did. And so I'm gonna come back to, when we went to the planning board earlier this year in May, um, we went through that process, and based upon our SAs, there were, there are statutes that say we don't have to meet certain regulations, excuse me, we don't have to go through the full process of the planning board, but we should try to meet all the regulations, being a government building. In that report, there was, in that session with the planning board, they mentioned things like erosion and runoff on that weren't, that they didn't feel were addressed, and said if we could please address them, that would be great. E E I, St. Pierre, our site work people went above and beyond to address issues that were identified by the planning board, above and beyond to address issues that were in running the plans, to look at the project, not from a yep, it's done, we're going to the next thing, but a yep, it's done. It's really done well. Um, last week, we walked with the project supervisor, Mike Davy from E E I, and he's like, no, that's unacceptable, that's unacceptable. And even yesterday, when Andy and Carrie walked in with Ryan Lebry, um, the, the, the project manager, he was like, no, that's not good enough. We need to do better. We could do better at that. And so that says a lot about the people that came to do the work. They could have certainly finished that job and walked away from there today and said, hey, sorry about that hole, and, you know, the paint doesn't match, but we did our job and we met the spec, and so thank you very much, we're moving on. They're gonna be there. We've created quite a punch list, but they put a lot of hard work and energy in making sure that it was done, it was done right, it was done to code, it was done to the request of the planning board, the fire chief, the state fire marshal, and the design, and to go above and beyond. You don't find that often, having done a, a, a building project a lot bigger, uh, you, sometimes you have a lot of issues with subcontractors. I wanna thank our teachers from two weeks ago, when I got to give teachers a sneak peek, the teachers were great, and it's the old Hoffmann sort of theory, the Hoffmann effect. They went in and they just interacted with the workers there and said, thank you, we appreciate what you're doing, we really like what you're doing, and you saw those workers sort of just pick themselves up, that somebody was actually interested in what they were doing to ask the question and say thank you. And then they really demonstrated their, their gratefulness, our teachers. They brought a taco truck out Tuesday, and they fed everybody on-site tacos and, uh, and a drink. And if you wanna see workers, be excited. Bring a taco truck to a work site, and they're very excited, and tell them that we're paying for it. So I, I, I really wanna make sure we compliment our contractors, our subcontractors, E E I, Mike Davy, Brandon, Brandon, um, just, they just went above and beyond, and I think that's important to recognize. This has been a long process since two thousand and sixteen, uh, but we're done. There's still more work to do. I think the C I P committee, we're already talking about what are some of those next step, and we'll talk about that during budget season. Two last, or one last piece, um, strategic plan. So our strategic plan will be up in January. I've reached out to some folks to look, to bring in a facilitator to look, to help us develop our strategic plan. I thought we did a great job with our last strategic plan. I, I don't remember the statistics, but I think we had met eighty percent or eighty-three percent of our strategies and action statements within that plan. It was a five-year plan. In the middle of that plan, we're two years of COVID. So to get eighty-three percent on a five-year plan, uh, speaks highly of our, my administration and my teachers and their, you know, ability to stick to something and see it from start to finish. Most strategic plans or most goal-setting plans at this point in time, folks have learned that five years is a long time. We need to look at potentially twelve months, eighteen months, longest maybe twenty-four months. And so I've reached out, um, we're looking at bringing somebody in from Primax, our insurance carrier, but they do a lot of this goal-setting activity. I went through a process, uh, with my superintendent's association, and they look at, uh, they look at assets, they look at barriers, and they help you create a narrative, and then from there develop your goals. And so I'm in conversation, I have a deeper conversation with them tomorrow to see if that's a potential, something they could do, um, what that may look like for us to do here in Sunapee, but, but sometime in January, um, we're gonna start a new strategic plan process, and hopefully we'll have a, a partner to help us do that.
Nice. Thank you. Yeah, and, and just about, you know, to Matt, who we should do some kind of, on the board, I don't know, we haven't done one since I've been on the board, but some kind of like, like a huge belt, like a wrestler's belt, or like a certificate, that's his style. And, um, the work that Matt and his team, Russ has done, Carrie and Andy has been fantastic to take one of the worst-rated schools in the state to be a much healthier place, and it was a big lift. So I know you're both not big on public compliments and all, but thank you very much as a teammate and a taxpayer. Um, school board topics. Anything on top of mind that you wanna share? Hearing, wondering about?
I'm just gonna piggyback and thank you two guys. I know the summer for a board member is a time to decompress, and I think we all needed that more than ever, you know, this summer, and you guys really stepped up and, uh, played a big role in pushing this forward from the board, uh, level, and, uh, really certainly rewarded the taxpayers faithfully in having reelected both of you. And so, uh, I'm really proud to serve with you guys, and I really appreciate your efforts this summer. Thank you.
Uh, one other topic, and if anyone in the community, you have extras, if you want, you wanna take home, I'll, I'll pass them out when I'm done speaking. Um, next, uh, nine fifteen, we're gonna have, uh, the fifteenth, we're gonna have the, uh, Don Tobin and the Fairer Funding Group, there's a presentation that's gone around the state talking about New Hampshire funding of public education. And, uh, part of this is, it's, you know, I don't know about sponsored or what the right term is, but, but Sunapee and Curisarch, um, have a quiet partnership supporting the opportunity for community to learn more about the landscape of the, the funding and also uh, hear a little bit of the story about the Stanford Freudian Group and, and their effort to save their public school. So it'll be, uh, presentation, a few different speakers, and a chance for Q and A. So it's not gonna be a meeting and nothing as formal as this, but largely a presentation and some Q and A opportunities. So if you have questions about it, or you have friends or family that would wanna come and ask questions, that they're gonna be encouraged. Um, but it should be a very informative night. It's gotten some good reactions around the state, and so I'm glad that we're gonna be able to have it here, so. Anything else, uh, floating around? You're both, you're all very still. I like that energy of you just meditated and excited about the day ahead. Alright. Um, need a motion to approve the proposed S M H S extracurricular coaching position, uh, Richard Page, come stepping up as the middle school girl's soccer coach. Thank you, Richard. Have a motion?
I'd like a motion to approve the proposed S M H S extracurricular coaching position.
All services. Discussion. All in favor, please say aye. And also as a thank you from the board for us always having, magically having coaches for our students. Uh, ba, 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 project update. Do you wanna, did we do it already, or do you wanna, do you wanna back clean up on that one?
Sure. Whirlwind summer. You know, I mean, there was lots of meetings, lots of site visits, lots of walkthroughs, lots of questions about little things. Um, I think we did a great job trying to get there and answer them. Um, but the, um, some of the things that I just wanna say that I think we hit just in the nick of time were like the, um, the oil tanks down at the Sherb. Um, you know, people were saying, you know, complaining about the cost of the biomass and propane, things like that, but when those got removed, there was leakage. So we are monitoring it, and, um, we, we're not sure yet if we gotta do wells or, um, if we have to remove some contaminated soil, but I feel like we hit that one just in the nick of time, because that could have been a big mess if we had a massive oil leak down there, especially with our close neighbor, you know, the bank. So things like that, I, you know, just makes me happy that we finally got it done as soon as we did, because, uh, I think that it could have cost the town a lot of money in the long run. So I can't say enough good about E E I. They, they really stepped up, and they, they got a lot done in a short period of time. Now, that said, there are a lot of things that still need to be completed. Uh, our power switch over, we still have to wait for every source. We're gonna have to do that on a long weekend, um, because we need more power to power our new grid system and the biomass plant, all that stuff. So we got some new transformers going in. Uh, hopefully that'll happen, you know, before November.
September twenty-fourth scheduled.
Okay, perfect. Um, and, uh, and then we're, we're looking to use our biomass, but we already have our propane boilers down at the site, um, if our biomass isn't up and running. Think the tanks are getting buried next week?
Right.
Yeah. So, um, worst-case scenario, we'll use our propane boilers for the beginning of the heating system, but it's season, but it sounds like, it sounds like everything's on track to be fired up for full weather, so. Super excited about that, especially seeing how chips are so much cheaper than oil right now. Should see a significant savings this year. So very excited to see how that all works. Other than that, I'm just thankful for everybody that works so hard, especially Matt and his gang. There was a lot to do before school opened, and, uh, they, they pulled it off.
I think the modular is actually, that's getting to come in a little earlier than we thought, right?
Yeah.
It's supposed to come mid-September instead of October, so that's good news. It'll take a little time to hook it up, but that's coming in. Um, I think we're probably a good couple of weeks out on completing the library, but, um, you know, again, like I said last time, just really pleased with the contingency planning that E E I presented to us, so anytime there was any kind of hookup or stumble on something that was, again, not anything in their control, mostly supply issues, there was always a contingency plan to go along with that, so really impressed with that. Um, but yeah, I mean, lots of, lots of punch list items to take care of, but nothing that's, you know, standing in the way of, of progress by any means, so it's all good stuff. all good stuff.
That's great. Yeah, faculty members want to be really informed. Superintendent runs the district and the priority is having a teacher contract with the board and everything. People are most of the business. So you want to ask about teacher contract and facilities, which is most of the non-human cost and how that's going and who's the district hiring? So it's nice to hear different perspectives with a similar message that we settled on the right resource and that they were good for you to work through this long adventure.
Yeah, they were responsive and they had, we did have a little bit of a, I was a little nervous in the middle of the project when we switched site superintendents, but Brian, the new superintendent, came in and just filled in like it was seamless, which is pretty unheard of in the construction world. Did a really nice job, so.
That's great. Yeah, you would know with your background. So it's great to hear because if you just, if you don't care about anything else other than tax dollars, it's good to know you're getting good value and meeting things on time, on budget, and solving supply chain and superintendent problem, or job super. So that's great.
Can I do a quick thing, Matt, on wood chip estimate? Because I think we've been looking for this. So we've signed a contract based upon what we estimate of 180 tons of wood chip to heat the gym and the elementary school. The rate is 155 per ton. We'd be looking at 27,900 totally, the heating costs for those two buildings. For reference, over the last 10 years, fuel usage for those two buildings, just the elementary school, we were spending 26.8 and then we're spending additional 19.4 on the gym. So there's supposed to be a $20,000 savings right there by going to the wood chip and heating both buildings. That's not on top of the $30,000, I believe, the buy it green local reimbursement from the state as well, if I had another question.
Yeah. And was that in this year's dollars for what oil would cost or was that last year's?
So this was done back in July.
Yeah, so.
So those are probably.
Even better.
Even better.
Right.
Well, I definitely would mention in this meeting, the age of the boilers in this building because that would totally not be cool. So it won't even go there. All right, let's move on quickly after that faux pas to nature's classroom.
Sorry, if you don't mind, I'll do them both because they're there. So we have a few, two field trips, they're standing field trips based upon policy, IJOA, field trips that have been standing, field trips that have run for more four years. Even though they're going out of town and out of state and staying overnight, I can approve them with Sean's approval as well. And then we let you know about them at the board meeting. Their itinerary is in information in the packet. I think maybe some of your kids probably have attended, one or if not both of these. They're great field trips. The nature classroom is for sixth graders, Sean. And Megan, you do the close-up trip and that's for sophomores, juniors, seniors?
Close-ups, awesome. Super awesome. And nature specialists, too. All right, thanks. Looking for motion for the.
No motion either.
For the manifest.
All right, sorry.
I'm jumping ahead.
On my phone.
I didn't give you a signal. End of chapter, starting page, manifest. Looking for a motion for the AP manifest in a batch.
I'm looking for the AP manifest, 2023-4, $77,595 and 2023-5, $62,511 in one second.
Questions, commentary? All in favor of the manifest as noted, please say aye. Moving on to, we don't have a payroll, we're already the agenda in the next meeting. Were we clear on payroll or is there something?
We did.
Okay. Kind of, this has a usual cycle in a, you know, a solid school with steady cadence. We'll talk about budget season, we'll do an awkward public display of figuring out dates that work for everybody unless you want to do that by an email. More updates on the school. I guess it's kind of the usual cycle.
Budget timeline, I'll have you approve budget timeline. So if you don't mind, we need to catch up around some policies. We have a federalist that we'd like to bring forward in October, but we'll set that before you go.
Quick correction for the public. This was an early draft that I accidentally printed. Note the date is right and I did not manage rev control, so just look at 9:15, which is next Thursday, which is why this was fixed and thankfully nobody handed it out in the public meetings. So sorry about that. 9:15, please come. Tell your friends and family. Don't give them that one. Looking for a motion to close the meeting. Sunupi's school board meeting Wednesday, September 7th at 6:35 PM. I guess we have it. All in favor, say aye. Go enjoy some soccer and a beautiful fall evening. Thanks for supporting our schools.